Clerk, call the roll.
Mayor Johnston.
Here.
Mayor Protim Wierich.
Here.
Councilmember Blatts.
Here.
Councilmember Francina.
Here.
Councilmember Feiney.
Here.
Will you join us in the pledge of allegiance? Paul, will you lead us?
Yes. After me, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, undeniably indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mayor Johnston, just a point of order, I was wondering if we can pursue and decode 54954B, point two, part two, A2, that we add a council and staff comment section at the end of the meeting?
Sure.
Okay, thank you.
I'm taking your word for all those sections that you quoted.
Okay.
But you're usually very reliable, so.
Thank you. At the end of the meeting.
At the end of the meeting, okay. We got the pledge, we don't have a consent agenda or approval of the agenda, so I guess we go right into the public comment. Do we have any cards? Okay, I have two cards.
There's no general public comment.
Oh, these are special, okay. I'm sorry, Bill, you're only going to get up once. Discussion, adoption of a complete streets master plan is the first item on the agenda. Mr. City Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. As you're well aware, this item had been previously scheduled, and we were not able to get to it that evening. Therefore, council directed that we schedule this for a special meeting so that we would not have to bump it again and would be able to give it the necessary required time for discussion. Without any further ado, then, I would like to invite our Public Works Director, Greg Grant Forward, who will give an overview of the proposal this evening.
Good evening, Mayor, and members of the council. Yes, yeah, this is the adoption of the complete streets master plan. This project's been underway for a couple of years, and as a reminder, we had a TDA Article Three grant, approximately $18,000, to supplement the -- these complete streets master plans are somewhat of a bike and pedestrian plan, but nowadays, they've been -- they encompass a little bit more to make the streets a little bit beyond bike and pedestrian friendly, to make them a complete street for all users, as well as the bikes, pedestrians, the cars, of course, are an important part, cars and vehicles, but so are various other users, those with limited access, the transit users and other people. So, a couple of years ago, we hired a consultant. It was -- the idea was to utilize and synergize that the neighborhood planning was underway. You might recall it was Sergeant Town Planning started their work a couple of years ago, and they had a subcontractor working with them known as Nelson Nygaard. They have an outstanding reputation nationwide, internationally, on these complete streets projects. So, we're able to utilize them for that minimal cost is to supplement the neighborhood planning. So, they spent three days on outreach. You know, we reserved the women's club in town, and they spent a day on pedestrian outreach, a day on bicycle outreach, and a day on other traffic calming issues in the city. They pulled that all together into a relatively simple plan. I mean, some of these plans you might see are gold-plated, where cities spend significant amounts of money, over $100,000. But for $18,000, I think we were trying to get a step forward in implementing and moving forward on the complete streets measures with the city. So, the Planning Commission took on review of this plan at their June 7 meeting, and they unanimously supported adopting it. They had some minor issues. They asked for staff to amend the -- into the plan. One of them was to promote negotiations with Caltrans, reduce speeds on Highway 33, otherwise known as Maricopa Highway, and on Ojai Avenue, Route 150. And those changes are incorporated into the master plan that's before you. And just as a background, the council did adopt a complete streets policy back in 2012, which included land use and circulation goals and objectives. This is supposed to be an implementation strategy, a way to move forward from that policy that we adopted in 2012. It does include project concepts and design guidelines focused primarily on the public I think the administrative report goes over some of the more detailed commissioner and public comments which we received at that time. And my intention was to just give a brief overview in a PowerPoint on what the plan encompasses, so you can see roughly what it's about. I'm sure you've seen it as the attachment in the agenda package tonight. But I'll run through it just to give you a feel for what the plan is, as a reminder to the public as well. It's the title page, so it was June 2017 that it went as a draft plan to the Planning Commission. And there's -- you can see the general background of the plan, and important note there, it is a living document. The intention here is not to be all-encompassing. This is not a final document. This thing will evolve and change, a lot like complete streets are evolving and changing in all communities. It's kind of a new territory. I think a lot of people say it's pendulum, that from the '40s, '50s, and '60s, when streets were just wider, faster, let's make them all for the cars, everybody's now pushing back to make these streets more livable for bicycles and pedestrians. And I think we've seen that push within the city here. There is recommendations in Section 2 for bikes, pedestrians, and traffic calming. And there's also a Section 3, a brief section about implementing these plans. The master plan process was the outreach that I mentioned Nelson Nygaard did for three days over at the women's club, with significant attendance wrapped up with their concept There's diagrams in here showing what the existing bike facilities are, which is pretty well limited to the Ojai Valley Bike Trail, the Class 1 Bike Trail, the old train track right-of-way. And you can also -- you can see that one leg that comes up through Libby Park, and then you can see the blue dash line, which is Grand Avenue, which is a Cheryl, which is a shared lane concept, right? The bikes can share the lanes with the cars. And then you can see the modal emphasis. There's diagrams here kind of emphasizing where the bikes would go, where the pedestrians could go, and also where mass transit goes. Mass transit, I guess, is not showing up well in this slide, but it's basically the trolley The bike recommendation section is based on a survey that they -- is pretty consistent nationwide. Whenever they survey communities, they find that the majority of people are interested but concerned with bike paths and bike riding on public streets. And a third of the people say, no way, no how, we're not going to do it, unsafe for my family and for myself. And then there's a group which is enthused and confident, is a term I guess they use here. So, about 7% of the people are those hardcore bikers that get out there and they'll ride with any kind of traffic. You might see them on Route 33 coming up through any part of between here and Ventura, and that's not a significant part of it. But the goal for a lot of these plans is to try to pull in that other group that feels concerned about biking on a path right next to cars moving at fast speed, obviously a very dangerous situation to be put in. So, this looks at -- here's the proposed bike network. Right now, instead of just having that bike path and the Cheryl's up on Grand Avenue, to actually try to get some north-south connectivity, as well as some parallel routes. Some people have mentioned during these outreach efforts that isn't it enough to simply have the Class 1 bike path on the railroad, the old railroad right-of-way? But you can see that's on the south part of the city, so a lot of people aren't willing to go all the way down and hit the bike path to get east-west. So, there's an attempt here to try to make a major route up north, would be Grand connecting over into the Koyama and down Koyama over to Miners Oaks area. But we're also looking at improving the Ojai Avenue and Maricopa Highway. Since this plan was begun, we've obtained the ATP grant, which is exactly focused on that, improving Ojai Avenue, Maricopa Highway for bikes and pedestrians. There's options shown for Grand Avenue. And keep in mind, this is concept, this isn't meant to be implemented from this plan. It would be -- each one of these projects would be taken individually and flushed out with a public input with the decisions on it. So, for instance, on the Grand Avenue, there's everything from the Cheryl concept through widening the curbs and creating extra space. And you'll see a concept in there which includes eliminating parking on one side, which would make space within the existing curb-to-curb. So, there's details in there, for about fitting into the right-of-way and expanding out the right-of-way. There's also concepts on trying to calm traffic on Koyama. There's a use of diverters. This is a potential concept as well. This is not implementation, but a concept that can be implemented later. So, we could take some of these triangular areas where Koyama intersects Yarra and Koyama intersects Del Norte, which was actually approved by the council as part of the 2017 paving, the Del Norte at Koyama. We're talking about a trial diverter, which would just have traffic go to one side of one of those triangles, which would help calm the traffic and make bicyclists feel safer on the Koyama section. And this is kind of a graphic, a very rough graphic that shows it, but we're proposing roughly this, but this is a very rough concept. I mean, this one basically is showing what Nelson Nygaard did in very quick manner, that there'd be River Rock that's common throughout the Arbolada to block off and divert traffic around one side. We would propose this to be filled in with mulch and everything during the trial that we're proposing, and it would be a narrow path for bicyclists and pedestrians on the left-hand side.
Greg, is that Souza down on the bottom corner?
(laughing).
The scarf looks familiar in the winter, doesn't it? And here we have Ojai Avenue. There's a lot of options on Ojai Avenue. I think we were potentially overly diverted, focused on Ojai Avenue, because the most important thing about Ojai Avenue and Maricopa is it's not our property, it's Caltrans. We have to work with Caltrans. So, we have this ATP grant, which is working on concepts right now, which, once they're accepted, we can get into design and find out what they will actually accept there. But obviously, there's a lot of available space. I'm sorry, on Ojai Avenue, there's not that much space. So, the best we can do on practically all of Ojai Avenue is squeeze a bike lane on each side, leaving parking, squeezing a bike lane in on both sides.
Could you clarify that? Are you saying -- what did you just say?
Okay.
On Ojai Avenue, squeezing a bike lane on both sides?
Yeah. On Ojai Avenue, that top figure is the existing, so there's about 18-foot travel lane on each side. That's a -- it's huge, right? I mean, 12-foot lanes are common on freeways. So, you can take that travel lane that's available on each side and keep the median, and that's what's shown on the bottom, is squeeze the median a little bit and keep travel lanes, of course, for cars, and put in a bike lane and still maintain parking on both sides. So, that's what we're proposing on Ojai Avenue. This is the concept we're talking about here, but when we get the ATP, we're proposing to do that.
Would the other option for Ojai Avenue be like on the avenue, just have the Cheryl's and the truck and the vehicle travel lane?
And the Grand Avenue?
No, no, Ojai Avenue.
Okay.
I just never have felt there was enough room. I always just ride in the -- oh, I always just ride -- I ride in the traffic on Ojai Avenue. I couldn't even imagine unless it was not a busy day. But, yeah. Okay, I won't interrupt.
Well, I mean, this approach would dedicate a bike lane, but that goes back to how comfortable people are. I think if you're either family, maybe you'd stick with the Ojai Valley bike path, but this would be -- it's common to see them, but it would be the travel lane with a bike lane next to it, and your parking lane stays there. So, you have to be aware of a fairly tight squeeze there.
Yeah, okay.
If I could, Greg, just one small point, I'm not trying to get in the weeds here, but that existing diagram up top, there are parking lanes right now on Ojai Avenue.
Right.
Are they within the existing 18 feet of the travel lane? Does that include the space for the parking on?
The master plan has more detail. These are certain figures taken out. For instance, this shows Canyada to Ventura. So, Canyada Ventura doesn't have a parking.
Oh, I see.
I think that -- let me look at the next slide.
Oh, you're talking about Canyada to Ventura?
Right. And now, here's a--
Okay, okay.
I did the same as you, I was thinking downtown.
Now makes sense, now makes sense.
Thank you, Greg.
Thank you, okay. Okay, yeah, okay.
So, there's separate details in here for all the various areas throughout the city that are still -- I want to remind everybody it's a concept, right? So, they're getting worked out with Caltrans, still at a conceptual level, just to get through CEQA, NEPA. And then, when we get to design phase, we'll do a full outreach with the community, which is still, if we stay on track, we'll make it next summer. So, same thing with Maricopa Highway. We've got a lot of options out there. We've got significant available space with two lanes traveling in each direction. So, you can actually have concepts where there's -- you maintain two lanes in each direction with a buffered bike lane. You can do a concept more where you take and you place one, you reduce it, and that's what's being proposed with the ATP at this point, is to reduce it to a road diet out there and reduce it from four lanes to two. And that would create a Class 4 bike lane, and that's when you actually use physical barriers separating the bikes from the cars. So, that's a point, whenever you go to Class 4, that a lot of people feel more comfortable. You feel more comfortable with your family or elderly or anybody less comfortable riding a bicycle. You've got that physical barrier separating you from the cars. There's a pedestrian section focuses up front that this diagram's often referred to, and it studies show that when people are hit in an accident by a car at 20 miles an hour, there's nine out of 10 people survive. When you take it up to 30, about half survive, and 40 miles an hour, 90% do not survive. So, it's an interesting diagram, just to emphasize the importance of traffic calming and trying to keep cars at a reasonable speed if the priority is for pedestrians, as well as bikes. And we also focused in this on adding additional crosswalks on Ojai Avenue. We've got significant gaps, pretty much when you leave the arcade and head east out of town. And so, we've already got the one in construction out at Whispering Oaks, but we're looking at several more, and they try to target 350 foot as the most common area, that a lot of people are willing to walk and wait for a crosswalk. If you go too much further than that, you see a lot of gaps where people will use the intermediate, they'll just go ahead and cross the street on their own. There's a lot of the projects which have been considered and grants have been obtained to improve or discussed, and there's figures in here approaching them. For instance, the Signal to Grand curve, which has the unusual offset, and so there was a first fix proposed, which would smooth out that and align that area, and much of the neighborhood was concerned that would speed up traffic too much. So, we've looked at a concept here with many traffic circles, and that one has grant funding available for it. We've already secured it.
Councilmember Ward?
Have we bought the property yet?
I believe it's 100% secure, right? City Manager, he's talking about the property that--
Absolutely closed, that parking grant--
We can now depend on that in our degrees of freedom for this design.
I -- the city owns the property.
Thank you.
So, anyways, concepts there, extremely rough, obviously. This would be same thing, would be refine the concept, put it out to the public, and discuss it with council and move towards a solution.
Greg, can I ask you a question while you have that?
Uh-huh, sure.
There's two exits above, coming from Summer, where it T-bones into Signal. There's two exits. There's a group of homes on Summers that have an alley behind them, correct?
What page?
We're on page 39, or Attachment A 39 to 53. It's the same picture as you're seeing there. So, there's a gentleman that lives up on the hill, and he has access to the turn here on the Grand Turn, unless there's another name for it. We'll name it tonight, the Grand Turn. So, there's already an access to that piece of property that's been there for who knows how many years. And then, on the Summer property, as it goes straight across on the west side of Signal, there's a group of homes, and behind those homes is an alley that everyone's garage is connected to, and they have access. So, I'm just, I don't see any--
About the third dot up, Greg.
Yeah. I don't see any mitigation of those two points in this diagram, and I was just wondering if you had any thoughts on how you were going to solve those two points at this point in time.
Roughly speaking, staying at the concept level, that I believe you're talking about the property that has been under development on the upper-left corner, right, on the outside corner?
It's one of them.
That's one.
And that property, the driveway, has been moved up on to Signal Street where it's safer. Having it in the middle, that curve is a dangerous situation anyway. So, that's already into their design review permit, is to move it up 100-plus feet.
But the alley on the homes behind?
The alley access would be difficult to eliminate. There's no other way to get in there. It's not used heavily, but we'll have to accommodate it.
So, how do you require those homes with that alley access? How do you treat them differently than you do with the gentleman that's had an existing access onto that curve for who knows how many years? How do we subject one person to one standard and then not the other groups of homes to the same standard? I'm just--
Yeah, I think in general, it's whenever a property's upgraded significantly. So, the property you're talking about on the left is significant improvements that had to go to the Planning Commission for design review permit. So, that was handled at that time, is to try to improve the safety of that driveway access.
Something for further discussion.
Yeah, I just ask.
Yeah.
Okay.
I know it was discussed at length with the Planning Commission and so on as well. And one of the major emphasis is here in the complete streets master plan, was to keep neighborhood character in mind, where nobody's trying to -- you might see the green blocking on bike paths becoming very popular in cities throughout the country, and that may not be, or likely is not, in keeping with the character of downtown Ojai and so on. So, we'll be very careful to any projects that are implemented or discussed or proposed to try to assure that the neighborhood charm and character is maintained for these projects. And there is a long series of toolboxes available at the end, and those toolboxes include everything from curb extensions. There's an existing one behind the West Ridge Market, and traffic circle examples are in there, diverters, chicanes. These are all techniques for traffic calming used throughout the country, throughout the world. And then, flashing beacons, like we have at the library, often called RRFBs, Rapid, rectangular rapid flashing beacons, RFBs. And some cities, I think I've seen a lot of these in San Francisco, they use parklets where people want to have more activity out in the street, they are out in the frontage, and they don't have the room available. They actually take a park space and they make it into restaurant space, dining space, sometimes bike rack space, that kind of thing, if you don't have room on your sidewalks. And there's example here, very adjacent to the City Hall and Blanch, that trees in the road, they're actually a traffic calming technique. I'm not sure if that was intentional up front or not. They work very well. Creative corner destination examples.
Trees to slow down.
And some cities are taking on this as an interesting way to not have to invest in what you might call a flatwork. The curbs and curbs have issues, right? Water don't -- does not flow through curbs well. So, some people paint in these improvements and use flexible diverters and so on to help reduce the intersection size and improve safety for pedestrians and bikes. And then, here's an example of places that Nelson Nygaard proposed that improvements could be utilized. For instance, you can see Koyama, there's not enough room in that curb-to-curb area from out to the city limits at Maricopa over to the cemetery, but there is room for an uphill bike lane. And that's where you need it more. If you're traveling with traffic downhill, it's a bit safer, but if you're struggling on the way uphillside, your speed differential between your travel and the car is higher, and it's more dangerous. And a couple of locations for possible diverters and--
(laughing).
We're in trouble with a game score.
What's the score?
Hard to compete with a game.
On that note, you know, it's probably moving towards the end. There is -- we're coming to an end, just in case someone is hurried to make that game.
In that district. Sorry about that.
But we're out at Figure 42 here, and this is an example, if people probably know where this is, the Presbyterian Church at the intersection of Foothill, and Aliso has got a lot of asphalt out there. And that area could be tightened up, and so, we're working on that as we do these paving jobs. We're trying to take really wide radius corners and pull in the radiuses to tighten it up to make it -- it is intentionally a little tighter for cars to be able to skim a corner at a high speed. You slow it down and make a tighter corner. So, that's the kind of thing you could do here.
Greg, while you're on that, just a question, is that a high accident-rated corner? Is that just you're using that as a diagram to show you what you can do, or is there a reason to do something like that on that specific corner because of a number of accidents or a number of?
This is a concept, so I don't have any -- it isn't even a proposed project, but it would be something to, if feasible, implement during paving jobs, to try to reduce the amount of paving and keep placing down. And it makes it a generally more pedestrian-friendly, safer intersection if we implement these kind of measures.
And the yellow area is what?
The -- I'm sorry?
The yellow area is what?
That would be reduced asphalt, reduced roadway.
So, are those stormwater catchment, if we're coming down Foothill? Are they bios -- some type of a bioswell, some type of a catchment system? Is that what you're envisioning there?
I think those would be great concepts to implement, for sure.
Just a note about Aliso Street, let's keep in mind that back in 1998, that was identified as a bicycle boulevard, because it's a parallel route, it's a safer route than Grand and Ojai Avenue for bicycles. So, we can envision Aliso being a major bicycle-friendly street.
Seems like a -- yeah, I think even the diagram you'll see was proposing a parallel route on Koyama, coming up to Aliso and getting up to Grand as an east-west route.
I can attest to the fact, since we both live near Aliso, I'm on it, you're near it. They're already treating it that way.
Yeah, yeah.
Bicycle, organized bicycle groups on the weekends, pretty much.
Right. The Koyama is a great ride for a bicycle pack.
Well, Aliso, they're--
So, then there's an implementation section, talking about capital program funding. This area wasn't fully heavily developed, but there's a concept in there as well. So, that, I just want to run over the plan to kind of introduce it, to remind you about the plan. Be glad to answer any questions, but just as a reminder, this is a concept. I think some people are concerned. I think you'll see that there's options provided for every project, and we would implement each one individually as a separate, more detailed concept, so we reach out to the public where we can implement.
My only question is if it's going to be next summer before any of this is implemented, except for maybe the crosswalks at Noradoff and--
Well, I think the implementation, the ATP, is well underway, but it won't be implemented, yeah, not at all. Yeah, there are certain projects, Whispering Oaks, Maricopa crossings, which are contracted and underway. There is the 2017 paving, which has complete streets measures implemented out in front of City Hall and down Blanch and down Ventura. Each one of the streets that we're paving, we're implementing some of these measures to help traffic calming, to help tighten up the radiuses. We're implementing bike crossing safety at Ventura, Blanch, and Bristol. So, those will have curb extensions with improved safety on those as well. So, it's all being implemented, but this does not have a tight layout implementation schedule.
Okay, I guess my point is that if we identify streets that really need the traffic slowed down until we can do some better infrastructure, can we, you know, put signs, share more, maybe some more share the road signs, something to indicate, for example, Grand Avenue is a route to school, and it converges with the peak traffic from, you know, people. And so, can we legally put a sign up, for example, that says traffic, you know, 15 miles per hour during school, like treat it like a school zone?
Mm-hmm.
You know how they identify a school zone, and during school hours, it has to be--
15 mile an hour is common close to schools, right, 300 feet?
This council has a responsibility, it's a public safety issue now. You know, we're going to do the, I'm going to do the bike train again, I hope nobody gets killed, you know, but we take our life in our hands, and that should not, we should not have allowed-- And that should not, we should not have allowed that level of deterioration. But we did, two generations. So, anyway, we can mull it over.
We could certainly, you know, if the council wants to take on particular projects and make a focus to move forward. I mean, we're hard at work, like I'm saying, with ATP, Whispering Oaks, Maricopa, and also the 2017 paving. We have our hands full with a lot of projects, but certainly could prioritize certain areas and try to take those on next.
But just to follow up with Suz's comment, I think we're well within the jurisdiction of the city away from the state highway to say have a reduced speed limit for school hours, for school to work, I mean, school to, school, biking to school paths. I mean, that's clearly within our jurisdiction. Is that correct?
It's, it's within jurisdiction, we just need to follow certain rules to implement something like that, yeah.
Okay. That is one of the things we hear over and over again, I'm sure you all hear complaints about speeding on Summer and Grand, you know, so, anyway, okay, move right along.
Be glad to answer any other questions, sir?
Thank you, it's great.
Thanks.
This isn't so much a question as it is an observation for somebody who has not struggled as you and many of the citizens have since 2012. But I hear you say this is conceptual, and I see that there's no money involved and there's no CEQA involved because there are no projects. Is that correct?
There is quite a few grants outstanding and underway, and so each one of those will be addressed separately as projects that the council will adopt and go through CEQA.
I'm just thinking procedurally, this plan is sort of a aspirational, conceptual, that is, that it's not saying something specifically is going to happen unless by a separate decision, something specifically is happening. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Absolutely, yes.
Because, I guess my concern, I tried to read all this stuff and, you know, try to catch up with what everybody else, I guess, has been dealing with. But there are some inherent conflicts between walking, riding bicycles, riding horses, driving cars, and parking requirements, you know, all of those different things. So I'm understanding you to say that this plan that we're considering tonight, nobody wants to say we don't want complete streets and safe streets, obviously, that's a good thing. And if it's conceptual, but I've had citizens say to me, wait a minute, you have to do this because it's part of the general plan and that's the constitution that we operate under and you're violating your general plan. This is not that sort of document. I'm not sure the general plan is either, but.
No, I think it gives more flexibility. I mean, it's a master plan that's been adopted by the council, presuming it goes to that step. And it gives staff direction to attempt to implement these, but yeah, none of these things are.
So a lot of what you do in the Public Works Department included a lot of this stuff anyway, before we ever talked about something like this, right?
Right.
You know, it's the warrant system for the intersections, whether a traffic signal is appropriate, whether or not stop signs, that also, so you were doing that anyway. This is just sort of trying to be an umbrella over the thing and to focus attention that we, we do want to move away from the, the 50s when it was, how fast can we get there and how wide can we make the roads, right? Is that?
That's correct.
But we're not locking ourselves into any, because I keep hearing people talking about certain things as though they are pretty much set projects that.
I should mention that the council has approved certain grants, which are underway. For instance, the ATP grant, this substantial grant. And we have, even for Grand Avenue, we have a grant to add bike improvements on it. We have another grant.
When you say a grant has been approved, is that, that within that grant is a project that's been defined and therefore approved? Is that right?
That's correct. So you look at that Grand Avenue, Grant, Grant to Summer intersection and Grant Signal Summer intersection, that, there's grant money there to improve that. It was first assumed.
But having the money available versus the decision made that this is a good project and we're going to go forward.
Yeah, very, very rough concept. I mean, it was assumed.
How to improve it?
I'm sorry?
Or how to improve it?
Exactly. I mean, I think there's old studies that showed, hey, straighten that out, but we'll never have the money. Then we got the money, we were almost ready to move forward on that, and we said, hold on just a minute, we did outreach.
Okay, are we still on that stage or is something?
We're still, and that's really, we stepped back because we had piecemeal all these smaller grants. And then we decided, there's an old grant money sitting there, why don't we go do this Complete Streets Master Plan to make sure the council's on board, that agrees this is all a good idea and we should be moving forward with these kind of things?
What I'm trying to sort out is the difference between, you know, you can have the money to do something and that doesn't necessarily mean it's something that you want to do in the end. And you're saying that that, that kind of a discussion has been held. Where do us, where does one go to know which of these things are pretty firmed up as opposed to still in the concept stage?
I guess as far as documentation is probably about as good as we've got right now.
Okay. And what you're saying here in this meeting is, is it's all still pretty much, unless a project has already been specked and bid out, that it's still in, in flux or it could be discussed and we'll get some kind of approval, the citizen involvement.
That's right. I think the only ones that have been approved and underway, I mentioned City Hall paving and the Whispering Oaks, Maricopa, and even ATP, all these projects have grant money, but worst case, if we can't have an agreement on it, they're happy to take the money back.
Well, just to clarify, Greg, Mr. Grant, the, the ATP grant is, is to do planning and study, not actually to complete the project? Or that's the first step on it?
Yeah, the transaction program.
Then it would come back to council.
Right, it still has to come to council, but it does include everything through construction to grant money.
Got it.
Mr. Mayor? Greg, the, the difficulty that I have with this is this is a master plan, but it looks like all it is is a bunch of options. I don't see any plan here. When is it going to get to the stage where it's going to come before us and we look at, Grand Avenue is an example, as, like, there's six options here? And then there's another three options? Well, that to me says, okay, these are our options, but it doesn't say we're going to do anything. And it doesn't say, here's what we want to do. So when does it get to the point where we actually can act on the way we would like it to be on Grand Avenue?
And I, I think to touch back on, somebody brought it up here, there, I think all of these projects, especially in a built city, a built-out city, have trade-offs. So there can be controversial in the community like we've already seen. So there are proposed that we, here's the concepts, everybody's worried, we're going to do that. You guys said you're going to do that. No, nobody said, we're going to do that. We have concepts, we want to take that project and focus on it, agree on a, on the design and move ahead with it. But the idea here is to say, this is what, to clarify, now, Grand Avenue, these are all concepts, nothing's been agreed on, nothing's been settled on, there's nothing getting rammed down anybody's throat. So, you know, these, these are all concepts. So the idea is to try to lay out, these are projects, and maybe the council has certain priorities and wants to move on quickly.
Well, I guess my question is, when are we going to have it before, so we do make the decision as what it's going to be? I understand none of this has been approved, but I think it's about time we begin approving something.
Right. So the, the $20,000 was to try to pull it all together in one plan and hopefully adopt it so we can all feel like this is what we want to be doing. And then we are taking each grant and focusing on it and do the concepts and bring it to council. Like I was saying, we just did it with Whispering Oaks, we decided, which, you might recall, we had options there too, we picked one. Maricopa was a little more straightforward, flashing beacons. And then on the 2017 paving, I outlined all of the implementation of Complete Streets measures. So I think they really need to be flushed through Complete Street Committee and come back to council. And I guess that's, I should point out, important part of this recommendation here is how do we approach some of these projects? When they're more planning oriented, we've been going through Complete Street Committee, planning, like this, this is a planning order document, and to council. For some smaller city public works projects, we've been going, concept, council pushed for it in the paving, we came up with concept, came back and you approved it. We didn't go through the additional steps of flushing through Complete Streets Committee and Planning Commission.
Prior to, can we, I know we all have a lot of questions, I have more questions. And Greg, thanks for, first of all, thanks for spending as much time as you had on this. It's, it's important, it's important for all of us, but just thank you for putting the effort into it. Can, can, can we hear the public comments before we continue? Do we have any?
Yeah, well, since you guys got to speak, I have one, my two cents. Okay, and I, I'm eager to hear the public comment, but I wanted to remind, as if you need a reminder, that the exact things that Greg is saying, God bless you, were said in 1998. So I share council member Blatz's concerns that, and there are hundreds of parents waiting, you know, these, the kids that were waiting for school routes in 1998 are now grown up, you know? I have their letters still begging for safe routes to school. There were like 150 letters from the, from the teachers, the children. And three members of the council decided that car parking was more important than the safety of kids, to put it, that's really what it came down to. So this council has to really have a clear vision why we're doing this, and then we can move it forward. When people complain about ramming something down your throat, just tell them it's the national, it's a law that every street, you know, it's safe for all users of the road. That's all you have to say. It has to be made safe. It's, it's the law.
Okay, well, we can come back to this when we go to the next step.
All right.
And I think we, we will engage the, the community now. But the reason I asked my question was, is the whole idea of process. If this is conceptual, and then priorities and funding, and then focus, and then public input, and then design, and then, I mean, that, if, if that's what we're talking about doing, then I'm fairly comfortable with that. But I, I keep hearing something that's a little different. It's between some people thinking, oh, we got that in the program, and now when are we going to get it done? As opposed to, it's something we'd like to do, but we don't have all the information yet. Okay, why don't we go to, go to the public comments first and then we can?
I just want to add one last commentary is that, don't forget, in the complete, in the capital improvement program, we have a complete streets section. We are committing over a five-year schedule to implement significant measures. And I know it's evolution, we're not going to just flip the city to, you know, I don't know what we're envisioning, I do know what we're envisioning, but we're not going to flip it there. It's all evolution. So we're doing this right now in the paving. We're actually making Koyama more safe. We're doing all kinds of complete streets measures. It includes flashing beacons at, at Kenyatta and at Blanch and at Montgomery. So all these things are being implemented. If you remind yourself in the cap improvement plan, there's a lot of work going on there.
Okay, I have three cards. Bill Miley. And Russell Sidney on deck.
Hi, good morning.
What?
This year's a really important year for me and my family because we've been here 49 years. And I've probably spoken more than 49 times.
No doubt.
This is.
I'm a witness.
Well, I really support the Complete Streets Plan. I've had a chance to look most of it over. I participated in the three-day community event a couple of years ago, and I've been occasionally to the meetings that were held. So I followed it, I know it's comprehensive, and I like all of it. Maybe there are a couple of things that I didn't see, but I especially like, number one, in my opinion, is the two-lane remodeling of the Maricopa Highway with a dedicated bike lane on each side. And I assume we'll consider pull-off lanes for people pulling into the hospital and such, so they don't have to slow up the whole thing. One lane is left going each way. Number two, the proposed completion of the Ojai Trail, or the path, through and around, through or around Soul Park Golf Course, terminating at Soul County Park. So my, my opinion is the current destination next to the golf course entrance is a big letdown when you get there. It's a driveway into the park. There's really no east destination which gives a walker, a bike rider, a good feeling of accomplishment, ma, I'm there, wow, this is really great. Oh, I'm here, there's a railing and there's a road and there's a golf course. And there's a, okay. So I guess you could look east over the golf course and see the Topo Topas from the golf course road. So I've been interested in that for years, and I was on a committee about 20 years ago here, sitting right in that seat. And we were talking about how we could get there, and we went out to Ojai Avenue and up to the fire station, and we went over the back of the west side of the Fairview Houses, and we put up a big cage so that people wouldn't get hit by golf courses, balls. And then we had a lot of people show up from Fairway Lane, and they say, we can't do that. You can't do that, because this is, and the whole plan died. Nothing ever happened to it. So it really, I like that big red line that Greg put over there, straight across. Boy, I, I think that is a really important thing to finish off the bike trail. Okay, number three, the proposed use of the Allison Lane, you know what that is? That's behind City Lane? I used to ride my bike up in down there. It's a great little place, and I did it for many years. But there, some of the neighbors use it as a trash pile, so, but that'd be great. Number four, the proposed changes on Ojai Avenue coming into town from Bristol, going east. I like the proposed parking in bike lanes, I especially like it if it slows down the traffic. I think it's, I don't think you can even defend it by looking at the sign as you come into town, it says 35 miles an hour. Ever go down that, that curve at 35 miles an hour? That's very dangerous. And I think Caltrans, anyway, it should be slowed down. And I like the 20 miles an hour, so that if 10 of us get in the roadway, nine live, but at 35, you know, 10 of us are going to get there, three of us are going to live.
I think you need to reread that section though, Bill.
All right, yeah, yeah. Well, no, I think I got it right.
We're not inviting people to.
So, no, yeah, we don't want them to do that, right? Okay. But it will reduce the revenues at the hospital.
Yes, unintended consequences.
Okay, right, okay. So, and, so it needs to, it needs to be at least 25, and I like narrowening lanes, that's great, okay.
Are you getting towards the end here?
Yeah, I am. Is the Ojai Valley Trail striped for right hand, right side and left side?
No.
Maybe it should be. You know, they're a place that can help people stay on one side, so when there's lots of people, bicycles can kind of, whatever. I think that's really important. And the last thing is that I used to ride my bike on Grand Avenue, I live on North Signal Street, and I, I would do this about five days a week, 2008 and before, for 15 years. And I would ride all the way out to McAndrew, standing up and pumping, and then I would pump my way up to Thatcher, and then I would break my way down, and I would go to Karn and Ford Island, and it was about 11 miles. And I'm one of those seven percenters. I'm dedicated and I'm going to do it, and I was never hit, but I was very careful. So I think that that route is really important for kids, and I don't know what we're going to do about the parking on both sides, but I'm going to be here when we talk about it. Thank you.
Okay, thanks, Bill. Russell?
Honorable Mayor, council members, thank you for the opportunity to speak again. I trust that you received the correspondence that I sent out regarding some of the concerns involved with what's happening. And I think part of what those concerns relate to is I'd like to see some more solid plans happening, and let's get to the point where we can actually do the things that need to happen. One of the things that's challenging in this situation is that whilst we do have a lot of good things in the Complete Streets Plan, and I'll leave it up to you to let us know whether it's enough to move forward with or not, there have been a number of changes that have happened over the period of time since this process was started. One of the large ones being that in 2015, the state finally finalized the Class Four Bike Lane specifications, and those are not included in the plan. Those are the specifications that allow us to have a protected bicycle lane going one direction in places like, from the golf course to Broadman and places like that, and would also be applicable on Maricopa. So that's an important change that hasn't been added to this. The changes in the management of the golf course helped us to identify the challenges that it's going to, that have been created to get billed across that golf course and that nice big red line that's on the map. We worked with Supervisor Bennett on that, and some of the bicycle advocates got very involved. And it looks like right now, we're going to have to go down Ojai Avenue from Bryant to get any further than, than we can on the trail right now. So that's a real concern that's come up and it's not reflected in the plan. One, you know, one of the things is, do we want to change the plans? Or can you folks tell us what we need to solve and add to the plan so that we can then take the next step, which is to get this work done? The issue of prioritizing these things is a concern. I want to do it all. I know Suzie wants to do it all, always want to do it all, but you're, you're the folks that have got the say on that. The ATP grant has also caused us to look more carefully at those issues on Ojai Avenue and Maricopa. And there's a lot of safety concerns that have come out from looking at that process. The ATP grant and the Topo Topa bike to school train last year showed us that we really don't have a clear understanding of what it's going to take to get our kids into our schools safely. What does it take in terms of bicycle infrastructure to create a safe route to school? Those plans do not exist, and they are really needed badly. Those plans do not exist and they are really needed badly. And also, the plan has identified for us that the, we were working with ten-foot vehicle lanes on the plan up until this version and because of the ATP grant, we have found out that Caltrans is more concerned about retaining eleven-foot lanes. And that's in a situation where we already have very tight room in order to be able to accommodate people on Ojai Avenue with a bicycle lane. So that makes that an even more dangerous route if we're going to have to keep those specifications. And we need to look at that more closely as part of this whole project. So, you know, coming up with options and priorities is something that you could really help move this process forward with and we'd really encourage you to be able to do that. Accepting the plan and giving us the guidance that it takes to build the amendments, to build up the details so that we can really get the community to say, okay, if we're going to, let's get our kids to school safely, let's do that. Let's deal with Grand Avenue and let's pick these options. There are some concerns that are coming up through the ATP grant and those concerns are not something that has been reflected clearly as a result of this complete street plan, so we have to deal with those as well. So your attention to all this is very important and I look forward to getting your guidance so that we can find the best way to move forward and help create that sixty percent, which includes the families and the seniors, and give them a safe place to ride. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Russell. Kathy Nolan?
Austin, council members. Kathy Nolan, Planning Commissioner and Chair of the Complete Streets Subcommittee. First of all, I'm here to encourage you to, of course, adopt the master plan, but I'm also here to thank you. When I first got on the Planning Commission in 2010, we were in the economic downturn and our planner at the time, I think it was maybe my second meeting in January, February of 2010, she said, well, there's two state mandates and we don't have money to hire a consultant, so we're assigning the projects to the Planning Commission. And one of them happened to be the lighting and the second one was, or excuse me, one of them was the landscape efficient water ordinance and the other one was complete streets. I did the water one the first year and the second year I was asked to do the, chair at the complete streets. So our assignment was to actually help write the policy and work with staff, which we did. And one of my fellow commissioners at the time, Paul Crabtree, who's back here, and myself and another commissioner worked on that. When it was done, I had a discussion with Paul, actually, and I said, God, what's going to happen? Is that policy going to sit on the shelf? And Paul said, well, hmm, we could do maybe an implementation plan. So I came back to city council and I asked if our committee could be a long-term committee and if we could come up with our own funding, could we, at the time, we were calling it an implementation plan, it's now morphed into a master plan. But thank you, I know not all the same members, but thanks to city council, they said, yes, you could go ahead. And so we ended up collecting a lot of data that we ended up sharing with Nelson Nygaard. So when I say we, I'm talking about several planning commissioners and members of the public who have continued to come on a regular basis and had an opportunity to voice their opinion and be part of the process of complete streets, whether we're advising Greg on, you know, capital improvement items and/or putting this master plan together. I also wanted to point it out, in design, a master plan is very broad stroke. So when you're first working on any project, whether you're an engineer, an architect, landscape architect, what have you, you know, you do all your findings, you gather all your information and then you start doing concepts or schematic. Then the next step is the master plan, it's still broad stroke. And then within that master plan, like we've done here, is we've identified areas with the use of Nelson Nygaard and members of the public and staff, we've identified where there may be problem or issue areas, put those into the master plan. And then when the time comes, if city council prioritizes and/or we get funding, then, you know, this probably answers Paul's question, then you go into more detail and then you go in and you really dial it in and everything, you know, all the particular information is used. So I noticed I just got the red light, so I'll say thank you, but I'm here to encourage you to adopt the complete street plan.
Thank you. John Lamar?
Hi, everyone. So I just wanted to start by saying thank you because I know what an effort everybody puts in and how much time and what it takes for people to come and show up for these kinds of things. Greg Grant, in my opinion, he's like doing an ancillary job to the Public Works Director in trying to manage and handle this and take all your questions and then correctly answer them. It would seem to me that if we were a larger entity, a bigger city, there would be just a person that all he did was work on the ATP grant and the implementation of something as large as this. So my, you know, very appreciative to all the work he's done. Kathy Nolan as well and all the people who have volunteered. So as being involved with the Mob Shop and the development of cycling here, recently getting involved with the Ojai Valley Bike Coalition, started by some really great people that love cycling, I'm here to represent a concept that instead of having a situation where our families in Ojai are concerned about allowing their kids to walk and use a bike to school, we have the opposite of that. We have a very safe environment where we feel like it's okay to say, yeah, ride your bike to school, that'd be great, it's good for you. We have a situation where we were proud of the environment that we've created and you can see, we have all these documents that really aspire to that. And so we want to do it and we can have this vision of creating a safe environment. The Ojai Valley Bike Coalition probably most represents that concept of having families move around Ojai safely and can have that time together and interact and be outside and connect with Ojai in that way. So that's the main thing that I wanted to say. How we get there, I'm not exactly sure. I'm just getting boned up on a lot of the planning and stuff and I have a planning background and, but I can say it's a, it's a big task and I admire all the people who are currently doing it. But I would say that at this particular time, when I do a project, I do a chronological, prioritized list that puts everything in front in the order that it should be chronologically. And I'd like to see a document like that. I kind of hear it being looked for within these conversations where we have a guiding document, which Russell did a great job of alluding to and asking for the council to create this document. I would love to be involved in helping to do that with some of these great people that clearly defines, step by step, what we need to do to implement this concept. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, John. That's all the cards I have, so I guess we'll bring it back to the council. Yes, sir?
May I?
You may. You are?
You may, you are.
I'm Paul Crabtree. Was one of the people who started the Complete Streets Subcommittee about five years ago or six or seven and have volunteered on it ever since. And it's been, it's been really a lot of work. And I, I walk, I ride my bike all the time. And, but there's also drivers, you know, and, and so when a curb extension goes in, you get drivers who complain or pedestrians who don't understand why it makes it safer. It's, and it's really been a process since World War II where the love of the automobile took over and we paved everything as wide as we could and we put the curbs out as far as we could. And the car was supposed to dominate and we invented jaywalking. A jay was supposed to be in Arkansas OKI who didn't know better than to just walk across the street. But, so I've got to hand it to Greg that it's, he's got a real challenge when, when we try to implement things and a driver comes by and they're a citizen and they need to get somewhere as well. So a complete street does include automobiles and pedestrians and bicycles and trees and green stuff and especially aesthetics that match our village character. So it's been a really hard job and, and for the budget that the city spent for this, it's an amazing document. If you wanted to spend a hundred thousand or more, you could probably, you know, you could get a lot more detail and, and you'd probably have to do CEQA on it and that sort of thing. I would, I would hate to see perfect get in the way of practical on this plan. I'd like to see it move forward and then as, as new projects come up, we do the design, we do more outreach, we present a solid solution at that time. Thank you.
Thank you, Paul. So I'm out of cards? I'm out of hint?
Yes, I... She's ahead of... May I request that she be allowed to speak? She's the head of the...
I know who she is. Thank you, Suzie. Come on, Kathy.
No, but she's special.
Okay.
I'll make it really quick. I just wanted to say, by having this master plan, even though it was in process and not complete, that helped the city of Ojai attain the ATP grant. This is a document that will put us ahead in the looking for funds and getting grants. So it's a very important document. Thank you.
Thank you, Kathy. Okay, we'll take it back to council now for if further questions or discussion.
I'll make a motion for, we can still discuss it.
Oh, sure. Okay, we got a motion?
I'd like to make a motion to adopt the conceptual master plan.
Second.
Okay, moved and seconded. Okay, we have a motion on the floor now, discussion. Suzie, you said you had...
Well, I think John Lamar touched on something that's very key. I would hate for the implementation to be slowed down because Greg Grant had too many hours, you know. I, you know, I really think, I would hope if Greg, if it gets to the point, because ideally, that's all, this would be a full-time job for Greg to implement this plan. So if you get to the point where you just, where you can see that you're just overwhelmed with all your other responsibilities, I would just ask that you make us aware of it. If there's some way to get assistance, because we've been working on this for so long now, twenty years, nineteen ninety-eight, nineteen ninety-seven, that it should not be slow, you know, what's the word? It should not be hindered due to you not having enough time to focus on implementation.
Other comments?
Well, I'm going to vote for this for a couple of basic reasons and most basically, Mr. Crabtree's comment, perfect should not defeat the practical. Is this a, is this complete, is this totally everything we need to do? Absolutely not. Is it a step forward? Yes. Is it a framework for thinking about taking further steps like implementation? Yes. Is it a framework for attracting resources and qualifying for further resources outside of tax dollars? Yes. So I think that's why it should be, we should vote for it.
Paul, you have one comment? Randy?
I would agree with William and I would agree with Paul and was it John? The fact that, again, I agree with the fact that creating a priority list for this community and identifying, you know, one, two, or one through fifteen, so that we're, we're not being, that's what I'm looking for, we're not being repetitive in nature, so we're going to do something over here and then have to come back to it in three years and redo it. So if we create that list, it's just going to help the community to buy in and also help us to do this properly and go after the right resources. Because I'm sensing a lot of funding for this, a lot of funding, and I don't have a sense this is coming from within the community. The other thing is, is I would just like to see when we do things, one, that we have more community meetings, to have a three-day meeting two years ago, it concerns me. I know the complete street has been meeting, but the complete street hasn't been meeting at a time that allows a lot of public input. So I'm just saying, as we move forward, I'd just love to have more opportunity for the public to buy in, in each specific project. And then more importantly, as we go through it, anytime that we can create a template or that we can do a demonstration, that would be completely beneficial to the, to the community. For instance, when we did those, those bowl belts or popouts years ago and then we tore them out and then the last time Greg actually put some straw bells out there and it worked. I'd like to see that done as often as we can because, again, it gives the, the community a sense of scope. So, but I'm for it a hundred percent too.
I want to, oh...
Okay, Suzie?
Before we vote, I have something I want to ask. I have to clear my throat. Did you want to say something first?
Well, you may go. Do you want to clear your throat while I...
I'm okay, I'm okay.
Yeah, okay, go ahead.
Okay, do you, as part of the motion, just to be clear...
Talk, speak into your microphone now.
Yes, that would help. Sorry. Is it on? Yeah. Okay, so as part of the motion, do you think it's necessary to add some clear statements such as create feasibility plans for actual safe routes to school to be used in planning of residential routes and in the ATP project design? Provide clear direction to staff about the priority for dealing with Grand Avenue and how to proceed? Having language that makes it clear. I mean, do you think that it's necessary to add any details to your motion or do you feel that this includes, you know, the understanding that this is a living document? You feel it's, it's...
I, I think it's a living document, but I have, I have absolutely no objection. If you want to add some more provisions to it, I'm not sure it's necessary.
Okay, well, then I suggest that we add these provisions. I read the two and maybe you won't want them all, but I'll continue. Having language that makes it a clear priority to identify the best bicycle pedestrian safety options and that none of the proposed solutions are final recommendations, particularly when it comes to the roadway areas needed to create essential safe bicycle routes. Create a feasibility plan for creating safe parallel routes that can become bicycle pedestrian wheelchair safe boulevards, particularly for the area east of the Arbolada. I think I'll stop there because that's enough detail. And that reminds me, at the last Complete Streets meeting, we had an incredible person who's on a wheelchair and he, what he said made it even clearer that when we do this for cyclists and pedestrians, we're really helping, we're becoming ADA compliant, which is mandated by law. So, okay.
What are my colleagues' thoughts on adding some language so that we can begin prioritizing the plan? Do you think we need it? I mean, that's one of the things, I see the plan and maybe Greg can help out, I see the plan as, as ideas, areas of, areas that we want to concentrate on and things like that. But there is no priority list as to, we're going to direct a priority of Grand Avenue first or Alisa Street first or something like that.
Okay. I'm, I'm going to be chair now and get some, some direction on this. I haven't commented much yet on this and I, as I said at the beginning of the meeting, I mean, everybody's for safe streets and complete streets. And I would submit to you, and this is maybe, I don't mean to be a wet blanket, because I think it's a great idea and all the work that's gone into it. But when you look at the condition of our streets, just the basics, like paving, they're not complete. People live on them, but they're, it's not done. And if you look at the budget for what it will take to do that, we don't have money in the budget for that. But the budget is where we set our priorities. We can talk all we want about what we're going to do, but until we get to that point where we think it's important enough and the council agrees on what comes first and how much money can we put up. I hope Randy's right. He, you said you had a sense that money was going to come our way. That's wonderful if it does.
I mean, outside of the city.
Right.
Grant, grants and things of that nature.
That's what I mean, yeah. And that's wonderful if that actually happens. But in the meantime, just with what we as a city have, is we have to deal with that budget and figure out what are the first things first. budget and figure out what are the first things first. So rather than, this is kind of going to your question, Paul, about do we want to put priorities and things in now, we will start getting closer to projects if we do that. I think that if what has been said here tonight, that this is a conceptual design, a framework in which to work, and then move to the next step, it's up to all of us to say, okay, once a month, something on this needs to come back for a discussion, or we need to have a special meeting to decide what the priorities are going to be. When I get a report that says there's no financial implication for something, if somebody were to give an order of magnitude on this, we're talking millions and millions of dollars, if we can even do it. And this morning's paper, "Ire Over Slimmer Roads Stirs Plan to Oust Bona," this is down in LA, if you read that in the LA Times this morning, doesn't mean slimmer roads aren't good, and that we in Ojai might be able to do it, but a lot of this stuff is going to be really tough. Now, working on something like Grand Avenue as a safe corridor to get to school, that would be something we could focus in on. But I don't think we can do it off the top of our heads here tonight. I think we take the first step. If we agree that this is the outline, the framework by which the next iteration will be done, I say we go with what has been presented to us. And then we take the next step and have Greg and the city manager bring back to us, you know, a prioritization exercise, and maybe in conjunction with the budget, to see if we have any money for these things. We have, we may have some money, we won't have enough money to do it all. And if what Randy is saying is true, or comes to pass, as that money comes in, it's going to help us set the priorities. Because a lot of time, money determines the priority when it's being donated or provided by another jurisdiction, so, okay.
Mayor, I had one comment. You know, they did in their, in Attachment A, page 7 of 53, they do, "These considerations lead to a preliminary list of goals for complete streets." I think personally, that's the starting point. And what we could ask Greg and Complete Streets to do is actually go back now to each of these line items and start going through them, prioritize these as to 1, 2, 3, 4 for them, and then actually start breaking them down into subcategories and coming back, just as you said, with more information. Again, we haven't even talked about any form of a traffic study for any of the impacts that we're thinking of creating. We're talking more crosswalks, let's say, on Ojai Avenue. How is that going to impact the traffic that we have already? Is it going to make it more congested, less congested, or more fluid? But there's a lot of things that, again, I agree with you, that we need information on. But we have a starting point, and I think that's, if I was going to give direction, it would be Greg and Complete Streets get together on your preliminary list and come back to us with some breakdowns of each of your line items as to what's inside each one of those.
Could I address that quickly?
Greg?
When we discussed it at Complete Streets Committee, the issue is that everything's top priority. It's very difficult, so I guess that's part of how the committee's managed, but it's very difficult. So that's where, I want to direct everybody to the capital improvement plan. It's a five-year plan, and if you look at every project in here, it's in that five-year plan. And I think that does go back to budgeting. We decide what needs to be done, because we have very limited staff here, so we need to rely on funding to assist, have assistance from consultants and so on, move this stuff forward. And we have a whole lot of work in that capital improvement program. We can't do all of those complete streets projects in one year.
Okay. Yes, Mr. Mayor, as the maker of the motion, I tend to agree with your comments. I think we ought to adopt it as it is proposed. The more I ask that question to generate some comment, and I'm satisfied that I've gotten the feedback that I was looking for, and I think we just adopt it as it is. We've already got some provisions, as Councilman Haney indicated. So my motion stays at, it's just to adopt the Complete Street Master Plan as it is.
Okay, and we're all of the same opinion, or I don't know if this is what you'd call a signing statement that the president makes, but when we approve the minutes, we are accepting this as a concept master plan. And we are committing ourselves to trying to establish at least the top three priorities as to where we're going to go from here.
Right.
Okay.
Yeah.
The reason I'm pressing on some of this is I'm trying to figure out how to feed into the process, because I've heard from a couple of constituents, and I think we all have. One was the four-way stops at the bicycle pass, I guess that's the Class 4, you know, the trail, in each of the area.
Class 1.
Oh, Class 1, does that make that a, is that the highest, or is that...
That's the best, yeah.
Yeah, right.
That's the best, a two-way cycle track of Class 4 is a one-way.
Oh, okay, well, we don't need, my point is simply that Tim suggested to me that we should be considering four-way stops, so that each, whenever we get to that point, it's sort of, you know, Alphonse and Gaston, you know, after you, no after you, no after you. But if there are signs, then it would be the normal rotation. I don't know what the implications of that are, but it just seems to me that tonight's not the night to have to do that, but that should be introduced into our process. That could be a relatively inexpensive, you know, priority one, you know, important but not too costly. Okay, is there anything else before we take a vote? Okay, roll call.
Mayor Johnston?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Wyrick?
Yes.
Councilmember Blatts?
Yes.
Councilmember Haney?
Yes.
Councilmember Francina?
Yes.
Mayor Johnston, if I could, I didn't want to make a comment before the vote.
City Manager McClary?
Thank you. I think there's a, if you turn to page five of the document, I think right in the beginning under background, page 5 of 53, it says, "A Plan for Ojai," and I think this paragraph states it pretty well in terms of giving a defining statement as to what this plan is. And it says, "The information in this document is intended to provide guidelines and recommendations. The recommendations represent a starting point for attaining the goals of this and related documents. The details of the plan will be resolved in a project development and planning and may be modified with further analysis and implementation." So I think that states pretty concisely what this is about.
Right. Unfortunately, the conversation goes all the way from that nice, general broad statement down to specifics in our neighborhood sign. Okay. So the motion is passed.
And just, Mayor, I was hoping to direct to, there's a recommendation, number four there, that we're hoping, staff is hoping to get direction on, how future complete streets, projects, measures are adopted. And because there's some discussion about the code, about how it's addressed, and there's some discussion on page seven of the administrative report.
Mayor Johnston, may I respectfully suggest that, in terms of priorities, we simply put that, number four, on a future agenda item for discussion and get on to the Sarzadi General Plan. It's a very involved discussion, it could be. That's my suggestion, is that we simply continue number four.
Is there any objection to that?
No objection.
Other than from Greg, sorry.
Thank you, Greg.
But thank you for pointing that out, because that is where the action starts.
Yeah.
And Mr. Mayor?
Nicely dodged it, didn't we?
Continued.
We continued it.
Excuse me, out of abundance of caution, I just want to confirm that the motion did include adoption of the resolution approving the Complete Streets Master Plan, all that? Okay, thank you.
So now we're on item number two, the updated Sarzadi Master Plan. Staff, have a report?
Yes, thank you, Mayor, and members of the city council. We have been working on the Sarzadi Master Plan for quite some time now. We had brought this back to the council originally in spring, and there were some comments back from council at that time. We had to make some adjustments to the document, there were some formatting issues. We also wanted to allow an opportunity for members of the council to do some tours of the facility, to get a little better idea of what's up there and how things are operating. And we were also asked to give a little bit more information on parking. And then we brought this, brought it back to council in July, and we were not able to get to it at that time, so it got continued to a special meeting along with the Complete Streets Master Plan. So I know we went through quite a lengthy presentation when this went back to, when this went to council previously, so not planning to go into the nitty-gritty details, but I'd be happy to give an overview if the council would so like that, or we can go right into the questions, if that's what council would like to desire.
We also have public comment.
Of course, right. We do have the master plan up on the screen, too, if we want to refer to any of the slides on that for purposes of discussion. I think it's very, was very appropriate, I think, to group this along with the Complete Streets Master Plan. I think in many ways, they have followed somewhat similar paths and are also trying to accomplish somewhat similar goals in terms of setting out a framework, a living document, so to speak, that we can use going forward. Also, much like with the Complete Streets Master Plan, as the Chair Nolan pointed out, that it was helped in the city's ability to secure the ATP grants. When we were working through the early phases of the master plan, we actually engaged the master plan designer as we were trying to figure out where to put new picnic structures in the park. So the new picnic structures in Sarzadi Park are actually the first implementation of a master plan that has actually not yet been adopted, so, but that's forward-thinking for you.
It showed it worked.
One thing that I did want to note, we mentioned the commission recommendations, that this matter did go to the Plan Commission, as well as the Historic Preservation Commission. Also wanted to mention that it clearly went through the Plan Commission for many, excuse me, to the Parks and Recreation Commission for several different iterations. And they did a lot of work as we worked through to make adjustments to the plan and reach the recommended plan that is before you tonight.
Okay, what's the council's pleasure?
Public comment.
Public comment, first, okay.
It's mine.
I do have no cards. Is there anybody out there that'd like to speak? Oh, arriving mail here. But it has, oh, Craig.
I'm here to speak tonight on behalf of the Boyd Center. I apologize, I wasn't able to attend any of the other meetings about this because of an illness, but I did see it was coming before the council tonight, and I did want to speak. I would like to remind the council and the public that the city's general plan calls for the preservation of the town's historic landmarks and potential landmarks. By any measure, the Boyd Club is a potential city landmark, and the council should preserve it. If you haven't read David Mason's wonderful article on the Boyd Club, please read it. You can find it by visiting ojaihistory.com and searching on Boyd Club. The Boyd Club is one of the oldest continuously operating community recreation centers west of the Mississippi. It was designed by Samuel Ilesley, who designed the Nordoff Fountain, the original Foothills Hotel, and the historic dining hall at Thatcher School. What a beautiful building and a wonderful reminder of Ojai's history if the Boyd Club were not only preserved, but restored. I have a couple of comments about the master plan as it relates to the Boyd Club. First, the city report claims that the master plan is exempt from CEQA because, and I'm quoting, "The proposed improvements to existing structures are minor in nature," unquote. The standard for historic structures is whether a proposed change would significantly impact the historic significance of the property. Removal of the Boyd Club, even if it were relocated, would definitely impact the historic significance of the property. Therefore, the Sarzadi Park Master Plan should not be exempt from environmental review. The language of the master plan says that, and I quote again, "An historic report will be completed prior to any relocation of the facility, whether it be on or off-site," end quote. The overall impression given by the report is that the Boyd Club will either be demolished or relocated. As even relocation of the building would negatively impact the building's historic significance, the historic report should have been done as part of the master plan process. Why it wasn't, I'm not sure. It's like ignoring the elephant in the room. I suggest a Boyd Club Historic Resource Report be done now with direction to the consultant to consider the impacts of both demolition and relocation. This report should be included as part of the master plan and evaluated through the EIR process. We want to encourage owners of the city's historic buildings to be proactive in evaluating the historic significance of their properties. The city should set an example by requesting an historic report for the Boyd Club before making a final decision on this master plan. Thank you.
Thank you, Greg. Is there anybody else that I have overlooked? Okay, we'll take the discussion to the council. Bill?
I'm going to jump in and say that I understand what Craig is talking about, and I think there's a way we can deal with that while still moving forward with the master plan tonight, because I think it's important to adopt the master plan, because it's inherently separable. There are inherently different components to it, and it's good to have the organizing principle adopted tonight. And I'm going to suggest that by making a motion, that we adopt the concept master plan for Sarzadi Park located 510 Park Road as defined in pages 1 through 13 of Attachment A, subject to the provision that an historic resources survey will be done before any character-defining alterations to the Boyd Center are performed.
I would second that.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded, discussion.
And that is not limited to relocation, in other words.
Yeah.
Right, but does it include relocation?
It includes relocation. But it also includes any character-defining changes, like demolition or anything.
Does that include also leaving it where it is, if that should be the...
Yeah, or if it's, it would include, an historic resources survey would be needed, let's say if there was a substantial alteration to its current configuration, even in its current location.
Okay.
That's my motion.
And like you said, I would agree with that 100%. I think having these studies done gives the community the history of that facility as well as that house, and I think it's valuable, incredibly valuable. Do I have a sense that that rec center is going to be built in my lifetime? I'm not sure. But you know what? I'm a firm believer in dreaming the dream. And I'm a firm believer in having a plan, and that's what this does. And as Steve attested to it, they've already started utilizing it for some of the work that needs to be done on the facility. And they've utilized it in their CIP program as far as prioritizing future needs of that facility, so I think it's a win for the community.
So does your motion then include a CEQA report? Is that...
No, because there's, it's saying we're going to have an historic resources survey done before doing anything to the Boyd Center.
Okay, and they'll determine if, okay, okay, okay.
Other comments?
No, I'm in favor of it.
Okay, well, my comments are that I'm not, I don't object to a study, but I would object to any outcome that would remove the Boyd Center from its current location. It seems to me that we impose restrictions on all sorts of people's property, even to calling them what, sites of merit, I think I've said this before in an open meeting, and things that don't have anywhere near the significance. In fact, I think I see someone in the audience that I used to play jungle ball with when we played volleyball in a room that you hit the ceiling more often than you hit the net. But it is a place that, the memories and the age of that building and the significance of it, we aren't even maintaining our gym that we have there properly. There, the defibrillators don't work over there. The fire extinguishers haven't been inspected, and the tags aren't up to date. I don't see how we can be considering dreaming the dream, Randy, at this point, if it includes the potential, I don't see how you move the building to begin with. We could spend a lot of time and money talking about moving the building, and I recognize that is not the original Boyd Center, no question. It got moved once before, and the original architecture was different. But restoration of it would be nice, but I think that should be something that would be done by people who love the history of the town and do it with private money. But as far as a facility to serve the youth of our town, particularly when the youth of our town are fewer, according to the school district, this is not the time, I don't think, for adopting a plan that's got an $18 million price tag on it right now, and lord knows what it will be in terms of present value of money within your lifetime, hopefully. I'm not done, thank you, I'll let you go next. But it bothers me that, you know, once someone starts focusing on something for the purposes of development, I think they did a wonderful job over there at the park on the picnic things. And I don't... And I don't think we needed a master plan to have done that, but it's great because it's in the master plan, and there are other good ideas in the master plan. But eliminating the grash, potentially eliminating that building, moving parking over and not necessarily creating more parking, moving it away from the ball fields and the athletic fields and putting it in front of the building, it just seems to me that it's nice for maximum use. I don't think it's Ohi, and I don't think it respects the village idea of our town, or at least we keep talking about the village character. I just, you know, I'm glad to see the grounds improved, and maybe a circular place for scooters and all that is nice, but to decide to junk the Boyd Center or move it is, first of all, I don't think it's going to really happen, but it worries me that we would adopt a plan saying that that's our value, that we want to do that. I think we ought to invest money in it to make it a nice place and keep it where it is. Okay.
Mr. Mayor, if I could, if I could.
Randi's next.
Okay. You know, Mr. Mayor, I agree with you. I think that we ought to, I would like to offer an amendment that we not do a historic survey, but that we adopt a plan that does not include the demolition or the moving of the Boyd Center.
Okay.
I would support that.
I'll accept an amendment.
Okay, thank you. Okay, further comment, comment on the amendment? I think that's a good idea.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Paul. Okay.
So, I just want to clarify. So, Paul, what you're saying is we're going to leave that building as is from this day forward? That's what I'm hearing. So, anything that happens on that recreation facility regarding that building cannot be...
Unless modified by the council.
No, that's not my intent. My intent is that we're approving a master plan that does not include any plan to move the building or to demolish the building. It still allows for the renovation of the building, consistent with whatever kind of historic preservation oversight there is, but it's going to leave it there, and it's not going to be demolished.
Well, that's, of course, subject, that's the current council, and future council that will make their decision.
And again, to me, and this is where I get lost in this conversation, I've never heard the word demolished used. It's not even in this, it's not even in this report. There is a thought process of relocating if, when, if and when we reach that time. That's all I'm trying to say. There is nothing about, anyone has ever said to tear that building down and throw away its historical significance to this community. No one has said that whatsoever. That building was moved onto the site and created some historic significance. Alls I'm saying is, down the road, there might be the same opportunity to move it to another city-owned parcel and create the same, or maintain the same significance of that historical building. So, that's all I'm trying to say. I'm not going to get tied up into this, okay? I think the master plan offers a lot of other components which I think are as important as a new recreation center. So, I'm not going to fight anyone on it, but I just want to be clear on this. No one is saying destroy that building. No one is saying demolish that building. No one. And the community groups that met did not say destroy that building. The community group wanted a new facility for their children. That's all I'm trying to say on that, okay?
Right, and what is the expression about, this town's not big enough for the both of us? This town, this park isn't big enough for both of those facilities? So, in improving the community center facility, right on the same footprint as the other building, that is where one comes to the conclusion, either it's going to be relocated or it's going to be torn down.
Well, that's what I'm saying. I think there's a multiple, a multiple of uses for that, of that building in our community. And I've said it all along, we need a building for cultural resources, other than that little small corner in the museum, and I would be the biggest fan of utilizing that building for that. But again, I think that's so far down the road, Mayor. But I'm, I can live with this.
Okay, other comments?
I have a question, just to follow up on your comment, Mayor, which I think is well-placed, because I do think there's a bit of an either/or here. So, I guess I'd be looking for a little direction from council. I understand the direction in terms of the Boyd Center, but I guess it begs the question, then, what does that mean, then, for the proposed community center? Is it just that we try to find a new location within the plan, or do we? I guess I'm looking for some...
It means there isn't a community center as of this vote.
Okay, that will take care of the conflict. Thank you for the clarification.
Okay, other comments? If not, will the clerk call the roll? Now, is that a substitute motion or an amendment to the first?
I accepted the amendment.
Okay, so...
I accepted the amendment to the motion.
Okay.
Councilmember Heaney?
Yes.
Councilmember Francina?
Yes.
Councilmember Blatz?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Wierich?
Yes.
Mayor Johnston?
Yes. Okay, motion carries. I guess we could think of it as a half a little, Randy, but we're moving that way. Maybe, you know, later we'll have an alternative that is more appealing.
Well, like you said, it's not, it's not the end of the deal. I kind of look at it the same as I do the Complete Streets.
It's a work in progress.
It's work in progress, there's no funding for it.
Right.
When the funding occurs, we'll find out if we can do Complete Streets.
But meanwhile, we've got a guideline for the grounds.
Yes, we do, and that's important.
Yeah, okay. Bill, you had, you wanted...
Yeah, we have a couple of things, and I provided what I thought was rationale. We can have some comments about things that are of concern to us or of the concern of the city manager. We can also talk about future agenda items. So, if we want to discuss upcoming meetings, we could. And I've got a couple of concerns, but Steve, I'm a, I'll defer to you if you want to, you know what some of my concerns are. And I, for example, a constituent told me today that staff is telling people at the desk that Fridays don't count on their review days for our performance guidelines on reviewing plans. And I was told this by a constituent today. This came up before, and they were very specific about who told them this.
Okay.
At the counter.
Okay.
And, you know, that kind of thing concerns me, that it comes before council, we say, no, we're not going to have Fridays not count, and then, after the fact, after council addresses this, constituents tell us that staff is still telling applicants that Fridays don't count on the number of days that are, they, you know, are allowed for review.
Okay, I'm happy, I'm happy to look into the issue with the contract, find out what's going on.
That kind of thing just bothers me.
Okay.
You know? And I just, it, so I'm expressing a concern, what I think is perfectly reasonable and unacceptable.
Sure, let me get some clarity back to council in terms of what the contract mandates and what we have promised in terms of providing for Fridays there.
And if we need to change something, then it needs to come to council, rather than staff, in effect, doing de facto policies.
I don't believe we've changed anything that came to council.
But I mean, I understand that, you know...
I agree in general terms.
People are being told at something at the counter.
Bill, are you saying that the instruction or the guideline is X number of business days with Fridays not counting as a business?
Well, that's what the applicants are being told, but that's not what staff, that's not what council directed.
Right, and the city manager is saying, what, that the contract, we don't, if we're not contracting for Fridays, then...
Let me see what the contract says, that's what I'm saying. I'll need to, I'll need to check with that, but I don't believe that we changed anything that was directed for council.
It's the kind of thing that council needs to be moved in.
Absolutely.
You know, because if you take out one day a week, that's a 20% extension of time.
Yeah, I don't think anything was taken away, but I will verify that.
You know, I just...
We should review, you know, the whole idea, you know, the calendar days versus work days, because to the community that we serve, what are our holidays and work days really are not relevant to their business decisions.
Right, when we tell them 10 days, they think 10 days.
Right.
Then, all of a sudden, 10 days, as they think of the days, is more than two weeks or more.
Right.
I understand the concern.
And it's, it's just not good customer service, is what I'm, the concern that I'm sharing.
Okay, other, did you have some other?
Well, do we need to have a discussion about the school board meeting? We've got some conflicts with individual council people.
Certainly have that discussion tonight. I believe, well, I won't speak for the mayor, but I believe your direction was to go ahead and set that for October 3rd.
Right, the background was that the school district, after we had that, the only thing I can think of is misstep, maybe, and certainly it wasn't intentional, that the formal notice that they were given was fairly late in the process, and they, the school board was somewhat incensed, they all calmed down, and so, we thought, well, maybe we should all get back together and talk a little bit, not about whether or not it gets its historic designation, but just in general, that site and what the expectations of the city and the school district. When the notice came out, I think what tweaked you, Bill, was that it sounded like, you know, that this to reconsider, in effect, the direction on historic designation, and that was, yeah, we didn't say that, and we don't want that, but I went after you and I, Bill and I met briefly last week and kind of, our conclusion was, as long as the conversation was general, anybody at the meeting, of course, can bring any subject up, but nobody has to respond to what's brought up if they don't feel it's appropriate, other than to indicate that it's not the right time and place. So, I did convey that to the superintendent of schools and said, do you have any second thoughts about the value of the meeting if it is just general in nature, as opposed to any specific topic? And he said, no, he thought it would be beneficial in the working relationship between the school board and the city, and I tend to agree with that. I know it may be a little uncomfortable, but not as uncomfortable as it was the night the whole board descended on us, offended by our process. Paul?
I'm not uncomfortable in the least of having a joint meeting between the school board and us. What I'm concerned about is that we've given our direction back to the planning commission, very specific, to re, I mean, the HPC, with very specific directions to renotice and hold another hearing with regard to the landmark designation. So, if we are going to have a meeting with them, I think we have to specifically exclude any comments, generalized or not, with regard to the landmark designation, because ultimately, depending on what happens at the HPC, it's going to be appealed to the city council, and even if it's not appealed, it has to come before us.
That's correct, yeah.
So, I just think it's totally inappropriate to meet with the, with the school board to discuss anything with regard to the landmarking. Now, if they want to talk about other things that they want to do with that property, I'm for it, but I think we have to have a basic understanding that there's to be no discussion with regard to the landmarking.
Because we have a public hearing scheduled.
We have a public hearing, there's nothing that they can say to us that we can respond to with regard to it.
Right, I guess that's the, this may be walking a fine line, but my feeling was, we made clear what our direction was to the commission, and the commission will now meticulously, I presume, follow all the notices and the information. I think the school district has already been in direct contact with staff on that, so, or the staff or the commission, so I think that's going to take place. Now, if we have a meeting and the question comes up about that, or they want to talk, or talk about it, I guess we can just say that we have nothing to say at this point. Whatever they want to say is their business, but to me, the more they talk about it, the more is making their own situation difficult, because I think this goes back several months where the school administrators, at least, were saying, you know, we'd really rather not have that talked about. I said, well, it's already talked about. So, if it's going to spook somebody or make somebody nervous about, you know, submitting an interest in the property, I think that everybody knows what's going on, so that doesn't, isn't going to change. So, they may or may not want to express their opinions on it, but we don't have to respond to it, you know?
But what if one of us does? I think it's totally inappropriate. What if one of us decides we're going to respond to it?
Well, hopefully, we're better disciplined than that, but I guess that would be legal. It would be legitimate to do it if we wanted, but I think we, as a council, also have the rules we have to follow.
I would say that if anybody were to decide to comment it at a general meeting, that we would then have to recuse ourselves from any discussion of it when it came before us.
Okay, well, that might be a good incentive for nobody to say anything if they want to have a vote.
I just, the difficulty I have is, they want to talk to us about what they want to do with that property. An integral part of what they want to tell us is they don't want the building landmarked for various reasons, and, and that's going before the HPC. So, what meaningful discussion can we have about what's going to happen on that property if we're not going to talk about the core issue that's before us right now, which is the landmarking? And I can tell you, that's got to be their core issue, because when we wanted to talk about what was going to happen with the rest of the property, they told us they weren't interested in talking to us. So, why else do they want to talk to us except for that issue?
Well, that was not what was conveyed to me, that they wanted to talk about that, to say they don't want it landmarked, you know? I think that they would prefer the timing to have been different, but it's, like I say, you know, that, that horse is left, you know? It's out there. I understand what you're saying, and I assume that they will understand what...
Well, before the issue of the landmarking came out, we reached out to them, to talk to them about what we thought about the development of that property, perhaps what the community thought about the development of that property, and they basically said they weren't interested in talking to us. So, with that being said, the only reason that anything has happened since that time is the fact that we've gone and said we're interested in landmarking the property. So, I have to assume that if they weren't interested in talking to us at one point about the plans for that property, and then we said we were interested in landmarking it, now they want to talk to us, what else could it be? That's all I can say.
Okay. My understanding of the situation is that this whole idea of landmarking started like a year and a half ago. Is that accurate?
That's correct.
Okay, so if this was a year and a half ago, before they ever advertised to surplus or lease the property out, they already knew that part. My understanding, or at least my feeling when we decided to have a committee of two approach the school district, was we don't have a proposal ourselves, so I'm not sure what we're going to negotiate, and I think that was the reaction from the school district. Absent the city submitting a proposal, they saw no reason to discuss it. That might be a good topic for us to chat about when we meet, if we meet jointly.
Mayor Johnston, they were a little more specific. They said, we got nothing to talk about until you tell us how much money you'll give us. They were even more specific than, you don't have a proposal. They specifically said, until they have an offer for money, we have nothing to talk to you. That was the report, that was the quote.
Well, unless we were asking for donation, I think that that's part of the proposal, is how much are you going to invest, you know?
But I guess what I'm trying to say is, as you know, any kind of a development project cannot ever be reduced to just dollars and cents. It's all about conditions and contingencies and zoning and et cetera.
Right, but when, but when the owner's offer is to lease the property, it would seem like money would be at least one of the key factors to get started, and they apparently thought otherwise, and, you know, we can talk about that to them, see if they would reconsider and engage with us, and if they say no, I know that, I think the statute's already run, right?
We're done.
Yeah, so they can move on, and we move on down, you know, parallel courses possibly, but, Randy?
I originally supported you in this because I think any communication with the school board is a benefit to the community on any issue, you know? We shouldn't be so far apart from each other. But I also agree with what Paul and William were saying, is it concerns me that there's not a true agenda. We haven't really seen one, we're just meeting to talk, and something could occur that might not be appropriate. I think a better time for the meeting might be after the HPC ruling, and then we decide what they're going to, you know, they're going to decide what they want to do at that point in time, and then we open up the conversation as to how we want to proceed, if they want to discuss it with us, if they want to appeal to us, and how that works. It might be a better time to have that conversation. But again, I sided with you early on about, about communicating with them. I think it is important. My fear is that we might bring something up that might be inappropriate just by accident, so.
Susan, you want...
Well, I won't be there, except for the first hour.
Okay, you lucked out. Well, if there's a meeting...
I'm going to try to be there, but I can't guarantee it.
It is recorded, correct?
Yes.
Right, yeah, it would be a...
And it's open to the public?
Yes.
So, what's to stop the public from discussing landmarking?
Well, they can say whatever they want to say, we just wouldn't comment that.
It's what we say that...
I think so.
Because that's not the subject, and Bill saved a... Because that's not the subject, and Bill saved us from that. He said, you know, the topic wasn't landmarking, because that's out of, out of order right now. But the topic of the school property has been in order for probably 25, 30 years at least. And if they're, they want to talk to us, it just seems to me that we should, should have the ability to, well, I shouldn't say that. I was going to say to contain ourselves, but not, I don't know what's going to be said that would be illegal or improper. Paul makes the one point, that if, if somebody were to decide to blurt out that they'd already made their minds up, then they've just removed themselves from the discussion when it comes back to council. So I think as long as we are, you know, courteous and receptive and try to, as you say, build a good relationship with our school board, I don't know how we, or why we would say no at this point, as long as we all understand. And I presume that, I don't know, there, Hank's at home watching this in his retirement, but I assume Andy probably would at least watch the replay and understand, because he and I have talked, and he understands that that's not the focal point of us getting together. It was just trying to improve the relationship and communications, and maybe we just simply agree to disagree and...
I think we should do it.
But they said they were very clear that the city had a substantial interest in the sense of land use in the community, and without our cooperation, nothing's going to happen, so they're not kidding themselves. I guess it's just a matter of, I suppose, respect and communication at this point, and hopefully we don't stick our foot in it.
Mr. McCleary can barely contain himself.
Oh, no, no.
I think we should hear what they have to say.
Mr. Mayor, if I could just ask, is this characterized as them meeting with us, or is it characterized as a joint meeting? Because I think there's a different, in a legal standpoint, and of course, we don't have Mr. Summers here tonight, but I think that there's clearly a different, well, legal implication if it is a joint meeting.
I, I won't try to put the city attorney hat on, I won't try to put the district hat on, but I, but I think if it was not a joint meeting, they would be limited to probably having less than a quorum participate. And so they, so my understanding, I think, is what they're requesting is for a joint meeting.
Well, I think that they were planning all to be here, whether or not that's, it has to be a joint meeting if it has some legal implication.
Yeah.
What do you think we should be calling it? And then...
Well, I don't, I'm not sure. I just know that in certain separate agencies, when they come together as a group, as a joint meeting...
Right.
They are acting as two joint bodies together. And I don't know if that has any legal implications for anything that's discussed at that meeting or not. Whereas it's, if the school board comes before us as the school board to talk to us, but it's not technically a joint meeting...
It's a Brown Act issue, and the two bodies can meet jointly. And, you know, obviously, if you're going to have a majority or agree to the majority participate, then that needs to be a properly noticed meeting for the Brown Act. And so you have to make sure that you're in a proper venue, within the jurisdictions, all that type of thing with proper noticing.
So as far as you're concerned, there's no legality of it being a joint meeting?
None that I'm aware of, not at all. I know we've done them here, and we did them frequently when I was over in Fillmore. And usually...
Well, no, I'm not, I'm not saying that it's illegal to have a joint meeting.
Right.
I'm just suggesting that where you have a tribunal such as the city council, that at some point in time is going to have before it, an issue before that agency. And now we are getting together as a joint meeting to discuss issues involving that property. I don't know whether there's any Roberts Rules that are in effect that says, we can't talk to you about that.
I think we're coming right back to the same conversation that we had at the, at the top here, which I think it really comes down to the, the response from the council members, much like if a constituent were to approach you on the street and say, you know, what do you think about, you know, the master, the park master plan? You'd say, well, you know, give me your comments, but, you know, I can't take a public position until I've had a chance to hear from everybody, that type of thing. So, so I don't know if that helps or not.
Well, you know, if you, if it's noticed as a public meeting and we meet jointly, I suppose each body could take action if they chose to, but I think we're, we're not entering into it with the idea of taking an action.
Correct.
We're just simply, you know, communication and learning more about how each other, each other's problems.
And I believe that's the school district's expectation too.
Well, if you could just pass it by, Matt, and see if there is any, because I'm not saying that I have done any independent research into it. It just seems to me that there could be some issue there.
And the meeting hasn't been noticed yet, has it?
No, sir.
Okay. So we have time, you can check with Matt.
I was going to say, we, that we can certainly hold it here, that's a minimum with the school district.
The audio quality is a lot better here for recordings.
I would agree. And the other question would be, what time would you like to hold the meeting? Six or seven?
I think you already said a time and a date.
Have we said it? Did we said it? I didn't see that we had set a time.
Six. I thought it was at six.
Is there, is there a better time for...
Aren't they used to meeting at six?
I'm not sure when they meet.
Who can be here?
Okay.
But you can be here in...
I can be here for, the earlier, the more I can be here.
Until seven.
Until seven, yeah.
So try for six? I'm sorry.
I, I may have, I may be absent. I have a business trip planned, but I'm very confident you guys can proceed without me. I will try very hard, but I may be coming in off the freeway as the meeting convenes.
And we can trust you with a red eye?
This is the only...
You don't want to be on the freeway today? Not to get, not to get too interactive.
I'm good at six or seven that day. Okay. Paul and I can be here. Randy, can you be here?
Yeah, I'm fine.
Okay. So three of us can be here. Maybe I should pass that back to Andy and say that, you know, we got three and four for, from six to seven, and...
And a big maybe.
And a big maybe. Okay. A big maybe from the Big Easy. Okay.
I got to go to Louisiana again.
Okay.[1641.21]